Run this truck, let's go in.
Sliding in the last minute.
Alright, so we've been approached by the county to pick up our own bulk trash or garbage. And uh... These are the numbers on the second page of this packet that uh... Give us what the numbers have been for about the last year. Which is averaged out to about twenty-seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents it's cost the city. To uh... Pick up the bulk garbage. And that's over and above each household paying three dollars a month. For county garbage pickup.
Question?
Shoot.
The three dollar, three dollar a month for the county, that's what we pay for standard trash, or is that a separate line just for bulk trash?
That's the bulk trash, three dollars, it's always been bulk trash.
Do we get that money to us inside the city, or does that go to the county?
Right now it goes to the county.
It goes to the county, cause they pick it up.
Okay, that makes sense, so um...
So it would then, it would come to us?
It would then come to us. Is that a rate that we can set or change?
We can, but you would have to be with notification, you know, in advance and all that.
Yeah, absolutely, I didn't know if that was something that we could do as a council level, or something that has to be done at base?
You could do it at a council level.
Alright, just curious, learning something you didn't know, sorry.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Um, these rates up here include um, the dump for the um, natural stuff like limbs and trees and stuff. And it also includes the dump at the dumps-
City dump.
City dump, excuse me, and there were five dumps in the month of February. And the total for those was three hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents, so... That gives you an idea when you look at February there, there were five dumps. And three loads of brush, six hundred dollars, and then the rest of the charge is uh, fuel. But they have a much lower rate on fuel than we do, so...
Do we have a total on what our annual cost would be on figures here?
I don't have a complete total, no sir, I just have all the different numbers and...
So you got... A bit kinda hard to estimate what it's gonna cost to shred the trees and limbs and stuff up, but... Right now the county pays... An individual to put their limbs and trees and stuff on their property, and then they have a uh... A logging company come over and shred the stuff and take it away. So there's two separate bills with that, they're paying six thousand dollars for everything to go there, so that might be negotiable with us. But it's two dollars and fifty cents a cubic yard for them to grind it. And I don't know, maybe we can get that price, maybe we can't, don't know.
Is this something we, are ladies not gonna pick up anymore, or they just make a proposal, we buy a truck?
They're, they're making, they made a strong suggestion that we get into the business of picking our bulk garbage up.
Alright, so we talk about hiring a driver, a CDL. Will it be a temporary person, or full-time employee?
Be temporary, two weeks of money.
Part-time employee, not temporary, part-time, not temporary.
Uh, part-time.
Would this be an insured, charged benefits position?
No.
No.
It's a max of eighty hours a month.
We've got a-
Cause they would spend, I'm sorry ma'am-
Go ahead.
They would only spend uh... Since it's just one truck instead of two like the county has, they probably would spend like four days picking up garbage. And then they would have the maintenance stuff to do on the truck, or whatever, so um... That's why I have down there eighty hours a month, max.
Where are we gonna store the truck at when we're not using it?
See, I need this laid outside.
Yeah, I asked them if they'd keep it in a covered area, or a garage, or something, and they said, "No, it's out in the elements." So we would just need to find a place to park it.
And the county, county also said that they would do the maintenance on it if we wanted it to-
Yeah, it's on there, I, I sent question mark, but you said that-
Maintenance at their cost or maintenance for free?
I'm sure it's at the cost.
I wonder if it's yours uh...
Yeah, but at least we would have someone to do it.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to take it, here, there, and under there.
Do we have an esti-, is there an estimate in here of what that cost is, cause I didn't see?
He did not give that information to us.
We have, just like twenty-three thousand, is that salary, is that what... Cost the city, you talking?
Per year.
So twenty-three thousand?
Yes, sir.
And we're looking at maybe six thousand annually per lot? That puts us at twenty-seven thousand? Am I asking where close to, we're paying the county thirty-two now? Without buying fuel, or insurance?
Well, that includes the fuel that we were paying to the county, cause the county charges us fuel.
Yeah, the fuel comes in on their bills.
Alright, so we're still at twenty-seven thousand?
Yes, sir.
And then you buy the insurance for another sixteen, that puts us at twenty-eight?
Fourteen, yes, sir.
So we're somewhere close to getting crowded thirty thousand dollars before you maintain... A truck that's a two thousand sixteen.
But then we would have about thirty-four eighty, or more, if y'all chose to change the monthly rate to the same or more. And then that's a thirty-four eighty a month, coming in.
But it's rough figures, thirty-five to forty thousand dollars to operate a truck per year?
Yes, sir.
And then we gotta pay out sixty-one thousand dollars for a truck, roughly. So, truck's got how many more years' life in it? So it's a sixteen and they're replacing it?
It's a sixteen with eighty-five thousand miles.
How many, how many hours is on the hour meter?
He didn't say, this is information from Kirk directly.
The hour meter, those trucks idle as much as they run. Equipment runs on hours, as much as they run.
He said it was a, a very good truck, and it was in very good shape, that's what he told me. But anyway, if you look at the cost of a new truck... Two hundred and one thousand dollars, pretty much.
But once we get into this, it's gonna be hard to go back.
There ain't no going back.
So, we spent sixty-one thousand bucks, we buy a truck, and it only lasts a couple of years. Now we're on the hook for forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, plus truck payment, two hundred thousand dollar truck payment.
I think, from where I'm sitting here, the figures I sit here run through my head. If, we'd be better off, leave it as it is. We've got some large expenditures coming up, fire department, sewer, that we really need to pay for. You buy a used truck, you use anything. And an engine goes bad, or a transmission goes bad, and it's sitting, and you're out a chunk of money just in parts.
The other thing that is, I don't think you can leave it as is, because I think what they're hinting at is, they're fixing to quit picking it up.
Correct.
Well, our, we, we, our choice is this, and, and I realize where they're going with it. Uh, but... If they just cut us off, if we can't afford to do it, cause like I said, our big straight sewer and fire department need to come up. I mean, that's things we've got to have. Just tell the people, the county's cut us off, it's this time, we don't have the money to maintain, to do it. And they can start raising cable to the county commissioner, not do it, cause, I mean, I... I turn wrenches a lot, and I kinda run through my head what the cost to maintain something, and what fuel costs are. You're looking at five to ten miles a gallon on fuel, an older vehicle. It just is what it is, I mean, I understand it may be a really good truck, but it's still a sixteen. So, seven years old? And I try to do my math in my head, I'm getting old, so a seven-year-old truck with... A whole lot of hours on the hour meter, cause, you know, it's every time it stops at a house, it sits there and runs, while the hydraulics running. I mean, I, I see the county would like to push us off on our own. But if we'd get that truck next year, that mo-, that truck goes completely nuts, and it's not feasible to fix it. We're looking at two hundred thousand dollars for a truck. And, my thinking right now, I think whatever money we have, any kind of extra money at all, we have, we need to spend on fire department. Cause I'm afraid we're gonna lose our fire rating if we do it at some point in time. And uh... And we're trying to dip off another expenditure, and there ain't no going back.
Question, I think you said this, but I'm just trying to make, get my head back, right back around it. And count the ci-, the citizens inside the ta-, the city, with the three dollar, which is what's on the thing now, we, that's how much money per month?
Is that they're currently paying?
But that's, but how much money per month is that coming into the city?
If we did it by the number of ci-, uh, households we have right now, it's three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. But that doesn't, money doesn't come to us right now, it goes to the county.
No, 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 I don't know.
Just wanna make sure you understood that.
I did, I did, I did, so that's three thousand?
It's on there.
So there on the monthly total, in the right inside, about middle of the page.
Two steps below the blurb from Kirk, yeah.
Three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, so we got, we got some, we got some growth coming in, so if we just make that four K a month, right? Roughly. Um, so that's um... Four times twelve, that's forty-eight thousand bucks a year, is what it's gonna bring in. So forty-eight thousand dollars a year, um, will pay... For, to operate it, probably. Um, and if we figure, on a worst case, say we gotta buy a two hundred thousand dollar truck in a couple of years, they got seven years out of it, assume we get seven years out of it. Um... You're looking at about thirty-five thousand dollars a year in payment from that truck alone, if you finance it. So, you're looking at, granted, we got a deal on this first truck, if it works out. But going forward, when this one doesn't, we're looking at about seventy thousand dollars a year, and do you think we can raise trash enough to cover seventy thousand dollars a year? That's, 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 that's the question I've got. Um, I, 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 I know this has come up a lot, so I'm, I'm not... My personal stance is, I don't wanna get into it, cause it's, it's just more headache and more issues and a whole lot of liability. But if we have to, we need to at least examine the numbers, right?
Right.
And that's, so that's all I'm doing at this point in time, so um... At one point in time, they were willing to give us a truck. That was, that was the first time they approached us with this. Um...
Well, I think that works out of the vocabulary right now.
Probably, but it depends how bad they want us to take over it too. Um, I'm just saying, cause-
The, the problem is, they don't have the manpower, and obviously, and they don't have the trucks, I don't think, either of them, and so that's the problem. We, we can get into trash business now, or later, and if we get in now, they can kinda help us with the routes and, and the logistical part of it, and then... Then we do what we gotta do about a truck, but we don't really have an option, in my opinion.
I think we could negotiate a little better if we have to get into it. Cause they have been more than willing to negotiate before.
Oh, well, we have to give them an answer.
Yeah.
Well, this is a work session here, I'm bringing this before everybody, so they can see what's-
Is it possible to, for us to subcontract it? To all the waste management companies?
Yeah, what would that cost us?
Yeah, it would cost more than, it would cost probably-
It'd probably double.
Yeah.
What the county's charging us now?
So the county's charging us thirty-two thousand dollars for this last year, plus they're getting... Uh, a thou-, almost two thousand dollars a month, well, no, they're getting almost thirty-five hundred dollars a month... To pick it up, so...
They're, they're going in the hole too, that's-
Yeah.
Well, they're not going in the hole, they're charging us, so they're not going in the hole, but... If you run those numbers, they're going in the hole based on the rest of the county, probably. Um, it's the same amount of money, um, but is it the same amount of money?
So that's forty-two thousand dollars a month. Along with the thirty-two thousand they're charging us. So that's seventy-six thousand dollars. Right there, out later than- Citizens in the cities making...
They didn't realize that our garbage pickup was broke up into two parts.
Never had paid attention to it.
I always saw a single mound on there.
They don't, I don't think they separated on your bills, but it is-
It used to be separated, years gone, it must not anymore.
Right.
Since it's not separated anymore, we sure we gonna get that?
Well, they do.
Oh yeah, I know they do.
They get it for picking up the garbage, so if they're not picking it up anymore, we'd get it, U-Hope gets there.
Have anyone discussed it, do you know how they carry on their business?
Well, they bought a truck, they got a truck from the county, and they hired a person to pick up the... Garbage.
What about Gurley?
I'm sorry?
Gurley, Gurley?
Gurley, I don't know about Gurley.
I just wanted to note, in Craig's email note here, he says that anybody could call and talk to a mechanic about it, or if y'all have questions, we can send it to him, and he can ask the mechanic. Cause I know you were concerned about the state of the truck, so... I can email about the hours on the meter, but there's other things I wouldn't know to ask, if y'all have questions.
We need to know, well, the county, I'm sure the tires and brakes stuff will probably have been fairly well made soon, but you don't know that, but... Um, we're gonna go in the hole fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year. Even buying a truck.
What's that number I gave you?
We're gonna go in the hole somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year.
It's costing us seventy now.
Yeah. Well, it's costing us thirty-two.
Well, the city's lost their revenue.
But if, but if it's not revenue, if you're, expend your charge for more than what comes in, it ain't revenue. It's, it's just like, hiring a county's like hiring a waste management system, so it's not, it's not lot, you can't count the revenue.
Well, but you're gonna, you're gonna expend... Thirty-two thousand, say, and you're gonna get... Thirty-five thousand, thirty-five hundred a month, closely. So you're still gonna go in the hole, but you're not gonna go in the hole fifty to sixty thousand, I think. Once you get the truck paid off, you won't be going in the hole.
The problem is, you'll never pay truck off.
Unless you just buy it.
Well, even if you buy it, by the time, if you, if we come up with sixty-one thousand dollars to buy this one, you got a couple of years to put money in the side, the next one you're gonna buy is gonna be two, two thirty, two forty, two fifty. And, so you're gonna be making payments on a truck, forever, unless we got an extra two or three hundred thousand dollars laying around every six or seven years to buy another truck.
Is there anything out there for like small rural cities and towns for uh, like on the sanitation side, for like grants and stuff like that? At my office?
I'm not seeing anything, I've only seen recycling grant stuff. But this isn't recycling, so...
Another, other thing, seeing if we could subcontract it, seeing if somebody like U-Hope or somebody else would do it, three dollars a month.
I'm sure they're going, the same way we would be, they're probably strapped with uh... Losing money too, for that.
I personally would like to see if we can negotiate a little bit better, at least if we're gonna have to get into this, I'd like to negotiate how we get into it a little bit better.
This isn't the dollar amount that they asked for on the rate, I think we're supposed to come up with a number to offer them? This is just what Melody gave me when I asked the value of the vehicle, when I called to get the insurance plate.
Probably a very fair, fair value.
Yes, sir, I just wanna make sure you knew that wasn't a number they asked for.
Okay, well, that helps, but... So-
We should negotiate the price of the truck.
Yeah, nothing else is really negotiable, you could probably negotiate the... The land storage for the limbs and stuff, I don't know, because they've paid six thousand dollars annually... For every, for once crossroads new home. Area.
County.
The county, to be stored in this person's prop-, on his property.
So, is that six thousand divided up amongst each of us, or is that what they pay in, in whole?
That's it, they're paying right now to this gentleman's, for, to, for all of the stuff they're doing. Owens Crossroads, and he's having a county-
So part of the negotiation could be that they cover those, that as well. We could add, you know?
Could add.
So that, that would reduce part of our yearly expenses.
Yeah.
Um... And somebody charges two dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard for grinding?
Yes.
And so that became, that, that begs the next question is, if we, if they do that, how do they divide up how much we pay for that? Something we'd have to figure out, because they're, they're doing it as a lot, how they know what's ours and what somebody else's, right?
Well, we just have to have a designated space to put our stuff, I guess.
Or, or we just do a, agree to, they oughta have an idea of how much they usually pick up, and they agree to a set amount. Um, it's, it's prefix, so we just pay so much per month versus for, so much per cubic yard, so to speak, so... Um-
I've got a call into that company, haven't got the response back yet.
If the county paid that bill, we just pay them correctly for some portion of it, right?
Yeah.
And so we could probably negotiate that as well, to get some assistance from the county to help us out to... For some number of years, or whatever the case may be.
I think the city and U-Hope does their own thing with theirs, I don't know what it is.
It'd be interesting to know.
All the grinding stuff, they take it to a, a yard, dump it out, and then Rusty Malick comes in and grinds it up, hauls some chimps off for boiler fuel, or whatever he can get, hire and get rid of. But he gets, he gets the yield, and, and then it costs two dollars a yard for him to do it. So then you'd have an expense in that too, the, having a place to do that, unless you acquired it or rented it, or whatever. Unless you can use the place that the county's using, which is Otis Brandon's place. And that might, that, that might could be something that can be brought to the table, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's where it would go now, the trash, going to dump, and the organic stuff is going to Otis Brandon's?
There's a few things we can negotiate, I think, that might help us.
Alright, so we got storage of the limbs? And possibility of the, seeing what kind of deal we can cut on the... Actual logging service, or mulching service there.
Storage of limbs, price of the truck, yeah.
Price of the truck.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then financially, we'd have to start figuring out, start planning now, for what we're gonna need. We also need to get some idea of what, and they, county oughta have rep maintenance records on that truck of um-
Yeah, they've got all the maintenance records.
So, well, I guess what I'm getting at, we oughta, we oughta get some idea of what it costs for, for maintenance on that truck, so we can start adding that in, so we can get a real number. They should be able to tell us how much they spend on yearly maintenance on it.
What else? Anything else good?
Good.
Jim?
I'm good.
Jerry?
We'll get more information, alright.
Okay. There.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, negotiate as much as we can.
Yeah.
At one point in time, they should be reminded, they offered to give us some truck.
Yeah, but uh, yeah, I know they did.
I realize that may change, but they need to be reminded that they did agree to that at one point in time, and see how, how well we can negotiate, and what they, where they wanna come up from there.
It might leave a write-off.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do that. Alright, well, I'm off Friday, so I'll go down and see if I can get a meeting set, we're pretty, go down there and talk to you.
And they're getting the diesel, fuel cheaper, see if maybe we can fill up down to county share?
Well, I wonder if that's because of how they're buying it, or if it's something on state bid too? And I wonder if there's something in that we need to check into, if they're getting the price they're getting just because of the bulk and quantity? Or if it's something, a, a, a state bid thing that we should apply for? I don't know the answer.
They just don't pay taxes?
They just don't pay taxes?
Well, I guess we qualify for the same thing, they don't pay sales tax.
Fuel, we bid, gas and diesel, we bid, all the local distributors bid on fuel, year to time, is how they used to do it, so...
Are we paying tax on our fuel right now? Okay, so I, there's, there's, there's gotta be some, some way we can negotiate that better, but... And, how often y'all gonna run this truck?
I bet it runs more than eighty hours a month.
That's what I'm wondering too.
I bet it does.
Yeah.
Especially with all the houses serving here.
So, what's the plan for that?
Well, they'll only run it two days a month now, for our area. So you're really thinking that'd be, that's all they run it, it's two days a month for our area, for the, the city of Owens Crossroads?
They do one side of the highway, you go out one day, and they do the other side.
I think to the fifteenth on this side of the highway.
They do two trucks, picking up limbs and stuff.
Yeah, that's true too.
They are using five trucks. So, yes, this one says one, two, three, yeah, five trucks.
They'll send two, two triaxles with one knuckle boom, and he'll load the dump trucks, and then load itself, and then they'll take three loads of the dump, and then come back, so...
I didn't think about that either, you're right, so one, doing the work of five, yeah.
Well, technically for our, I'd say, Scott, what do you think, two, two, a dump truck and a knuckle boom would probably-
We could probably get by with a knuckle boom for, the, the bench is pretty big on those things.
That's what I'm getting at, do you, do you think we need a dump truck as well?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was wondering.
But what they, what, what they do sometimes is they'll pick through and load, one truck will get in front, one truck will get in back, and they'll put brush on one, trash on the other, and then the trash truck will go to dump, and then brush truck will go to the brush yard, or whatever, so... But the county could probably help us if it got to that point, you know, before we got ready to do that, but I think, I think we'd be alright, one truck, he's just gonna have to make, he'll just have to make a round and do brush one day? And then make around and do trash the next day, or whatever, five hours a day, or whatever he's gonna do.
That's kinda the way we thought about it.
But being part-time, he could work, he could go, he could start after the school traffic got going, and he could quit before the...
School traffic got started, yeah.
Brush yard traffic got going, start home, or whatever, so... But it'll be a full-time position for it's up with, it's just a matter of time.
But to start out, don't you think part-time would be okay?
I wouldn't think so, yeah.
Do we know anybody that's willing to do this part-time?
We haven't went that far.
No.
Cause that's gonna be the next problem.
You gotta have a CDL.
Gotta be a CDL operator. And do these trucks, uh, have to pass DOT certifications and stuff?
Yeah, they do.
So is that, is that part of our, figuring into our cost?
That'll, that'll be some of the maintenance, but depending on what's wrong, if there's major issues with the truck, and that'll affect it, but it sounds like the truck's in pretty good shape. But they, the, the reason the county's trying to sell it is, they buy it so cheap, and then they can turn around and sell it, then what they're selling it for, they're basically... They're basically getting re, they're, they're getting the investment back in the truck, and then buying a new truck, and they run it for a couple of years, and then they s, they were buying dump trucks years ago, and it's making profit on them, running them for two years, and selling them. Not because they needed to sell them, just because they were, the value of them was more than what they gave for them, so they were, they were making money. And that's probably what they're doing with this one.
I can imagine what the wait time would be if you ordered a truck right now.
It's depreciated less than the value of the, of that current value, I'm sure.
Okay. So I'll make a call Craig Friday and talk to him, see where we got him. Let's get back with you guys. Anybody, I'll set a meeting, anybody available to go, who wants to go? With me, be good.
Well, we wanna discuss anything for tomorrow night, tonight, or at least we'll wait and discuss tomorrow night?
Just wait till tomorrow night, we don't have any of that together for y'all.
So, Dan noticed that the um... Sewer thing was on there again, but there was no paperwork on it at all?
It wasn't supposed to be on there, it's getting moved.
Alright, thank y'all.
Chief, you got a second?
Yes.